Thank you.
Let me do it a little voiceover right here.
Go ahead, we're rolling.
Hundreds of... Let me know when you're rolling by. The Redmond Plan calls for the busing of the students to set up a more racially balanced learning system in predominantly all-white schools. The board meeting is now over. That's a little kid. Here's a big song up here.
Keep the soap. Please keep the soap. We can do this now if commanders here are not made.
There's a board here. Yeah, I'm going to interview you right here. You want to talk?
Yeah, they were all in there.
You want to talk?
They were in there, how come we weren't?
Don't say anything, don't swear, just give me... Are you rolling?
I wasn't going to swear, I was...
Dean, how come they were all in there and we weren't?
There's a lot of spirit here this afternoon. There's a lot of spirit here at the Board of Education, outside the board chambers. You ladies are here, why?
Because we don't bully... We're here to oppose the busing.
Where are you from?
Northwest side.
What else is bad about it?
I don't... It's my money, it's not fair. If anything, I think this money that they're trying to gift to these people all the time should be given to the senior citizens who have had tax to death, that half of them have to sell their houses because they can't afford to keep up with the taxes anymore. We weren't even represented fairly in this meeting, we should have been.
And if they're overcrowded over there with the money that they're using to... Why? We don't want them bussed.
How about you ma'am?
I'm racing to this...
How about you?
I am from Mary Lion School, I am a representative of Mary Lion, not so ever. We are fighting the standard of our schools and busing.
Because you're fighting busing?
Busing and the standard of us...
And why are you fighting busing then?
Well, I can't, I think our people have spoken for us today.
It's a waste of taxpayers' money, a waste of taxpayers' money. Integration isn't involved here. We don't even have the facilities for our schools. Our empty room, one is used for a science room, it's not even empty. My child doesn't even sit in a desk that fits him.
You're saying that the reason for busing, or the reasons they give for busing is that it will underload the schools and...
Exactly, no, no.
You're saying that your school is overloaded now?
Yes. It is not overloaded, the empty rooms are not empty.
They're saying that the empty rooms are empty.
But our small children, we want them to take a survey of preschoolers and see how many we have.
All right, ma'am?
They're talking about good education.
I am representing the school, may I speak please?
Go ahead ma'am.
I was one of the people that was with Mr. McKay.
Okay, go ahead ma'am.
Monday. And we were shown by Mr. Pachinski the charts.
What chart are they?
The charts of the percentage wise with the school and the color and the race. And Mr. Pachinski proved that when this program started, there were empty rooms at the May School. I can't quote the figure. But in forty-eight months, May has now doubled.
Instead of doubling for May School, he would not let it finish.
Congressman, you have a moment sir? Turn around to the cameras. Right here to the cameras.
Churches, it means that quiet and they've been screaming ever since.
Are you rolling? Ma'am, where do you live?
They, I think the top amount, the board is guaranteed that it would not exceed more than fifteen percent of the school. And the top amount that I had seen was ten point... They didn't even reach the fifteen percent on this. They are keeping it at a ten, between eight to ten level percent of the receiving schools. We have the sending schools, the overcrowding and with the Negro children.
Did you have this many supporters here today as are opposing the plan?
No, our people work, they have families to support also. We are not financed by the politicians. We did, we're not as they were, as went on in their rallies that they held before this hearing. We had donated church buses and people who went out to represent the other people. But we have had inner meetings with the parents, they understand it, they want it for their children. They want the busing.
Thank you very much.
I'm telling you... Miller, that we're another organization, don't say everybody did because everybody was not bussed.
I'm talking about the North Side.
No, I will say that, don't qualify it with the...
The whole city of our Chicago is all our community.
Each community must be able to state their stand. I agree with you that you must say what you please, but we must say what we please. No, if you have empty rooms, if we don't...
You've never been to our school?
We don't, we don't, we don't.
You don't even know our school? What school am I from?
We do not, no.
We have been through the schools, the parents of the May School have been some of the rooms, schools, they have said, seen the rooms.
Then let May School in, they like it, have it. We don't want it and we do not want it.
We do not have any empty rooms.
What school are you from?
I'm from Dever School, we do not have any empty rooms.
That's all right, you don't need to point.
Last night a group of Dever parents said they had three empty rooms, not four, at a meeting. And if this gentleman wants to oppose it, go tell them. The board report states four from Dever.
Is your Dever school in the Austin area?
No, it's north.
North of them. But we have the next school from us, which is the Candy School. Now they cover also the Shores Village, which is north of Irving Park, west of Cumberland there. That all is in our area too. Them people have no bus. The only thing they have is a bullish wagon for kindergarten. They have to transport their own kids. There's over three hundred children that go to the Candy School. They have bus pools and they drive them there. Every day they've been doing that for six years, they have no bus transportation.
How about your children, will they be affected by this?
My children certainly will.
How will they be affected?
My children do not have... My daughter goes to Dever School, there are forty-three in her room. That is overcrowded. We have no books in our school. My daughter has to take her homework and copy it in a book because it is falling apart, and copy her homework and take it home because the book is falling apart because they cannot take it home.
You're saying they should take this money they're using for busing?
We have no cafeteria in our school. They proposed to carry the food all the way from Steinman's High School over to Dever and pay them people. Plus the train cost of the bus. If these children get sick, they intend, from what I hear, is take a taxi and send them home. If my children get sick, I have to come home for them children. I have to come home to work.
We have the permissive transfer, why don't they fill the rooms with the permissive transfer pupils?
We have short Endeavor Three.
This is voluntary, they may do it if they wish. You may take your child and send your child to any school that is in need of students. If you have room in a classroom, the permissive transfer says that another student may go because it's there, it's open. But this idea is mandatory, they have said this is something you must do. The public does not like must, mandatory is something they've already given them the permissive, then it's not working. The people don't want it, so they won't want this.
You've seen nothing beneficial in the Redmond Plan?
I see nothing beneficial in this part of it, the vocational part of it, that's a different story. The Redmond Plan is not the Redmond Plan. The Redmond Plan is a desegregation plan. This is not just the Redmond Plan, this concerns several things, but the busing is one part of it. This is one of the parts that is being implemented. The first part, or maybe one of the first parts, was this making the three districts, right? Where they decentralized it. Then they put in the permissive transfer plan where it was allowable for the person who wishes to go, to go. If a school has in its curriculum something that you must have for your livelihood, you may transfer. It's fine because this kind of a thing, the public has got the say.
You're saying that the busing or the transfer of students should be left up to the individual?
Why should they tell a citizen of Chicago? I am saying that the busing should not be implemented by the Board of Education. There should be no busing where everyone has to pay for... Now, they are going to have four hundred students now, wait. Four hundred students now. Next week it'll be six hundred, next time it'll be another seven hundred, then it'll be a thousand, then it'll be like New York. We'll end up with a nine million dollar deficit in the budget because we haven't got the money to pay for something that should have been voluntary in the first place. Now, if the people and the parents and the taxpayers want to pay for their child to go across the city, then fine, let them go across the city and pay for it. Why should everybody?
Let me know when you're rolling. This... You ready? This protest, the citizens' protest against school busing set forth by the Board of Education has moved to several scenes this afternoon. This is downstairs in the lobby of the Board of Education building. Police commander is telling these protesters that they cannot move outside of the yellow horses. There are proponents, opponents. There are proponents, opponents, and people in the middle on the school busing plan. Those on either side are very vehement about their beliefs. Let's get a long shot so I can do an opening. Okay? No, I did an opening on both sides. How long these protesters are going to be here is not known. It appears now that they're going to stand their vigil at least until they can talk to someone who has been inside the board meeting this afternoon. Whether it be Dr. Redmond, President Wiston, or Congressman Pachinski, who is also opposed to the busing plan and who represents most of these people here this afternoon.
And we're still fighting, and don't forget we'll always fight. Today we got a snow job. The next time we meet, we want action. And any representative that doesn't come into our area, we should ask for his resignation. Now! We want the, we want the voice of the people. On the Board of Education, we're not victims.
You're going to read the newspapers tomorrow and the TV media, and they're going to tell you that you've won a partial victory.
We didn't win a thing, not a thing.
All I can tell you is, the item was not depleted from the budget, it's still there. The president of the board assured all of the legislators in their meeting there, and you want them in, you give them... We met with him for one hour. And we persisted and we begged, we pleaded, we did everything we could to get that out and they wouldn't take it out. Then he offered us a compromise. Hear me out, please, hear me out, don't... He said that he'd appoint five members who would go out to the schools to get all the pros and cons and the issues and listen to you folks and to all the groups, and the board did not follow his request. We are now supposed to bring our people to the little cubby hole and have a repetition of what happened today.
I heard Mike, that was originally part of that intersection in...
Oh, that's sound problem.
When you take the right of ways out of the area. Another point, we are working very closely with the department of...
Some grass, it was sixty-three feet on one side.
So you've actually been collecting this material since fifty-seven?
No, I am, this material... Uh, six fifty...
Under your name?
SE eight two six hundred. That's SE eight twenty-six hundred.
Mr. Field, you've... The city has merely, had merely an easement in the street. And when the city vacated that street, it reverted to the fee owner and therefore this is different than a sale of a piece of land where the city owns the full legal title and there's a conveyance by deed to an individual. There was no conveyance by deed here because the city did not own the fee in the street. It was, all it required was a vacation ordinance. I had nothing to do with originating the vacation of the street. We spent approximately thirty thousand dollars on plans for another building when we learned of the vacation sometime about January of nineteen sixty-seven. When we was going to be this vacation, we had nothing to do with the price. We were not required to see any alderman to have this matter of vacation introduced because the city initiated it, the city carried out all in connection with it. Now, one in this street was owned by the city, which included this, what is commonly known as a park, which actually was not. The city received no revenue by way of taxes from this street. Now, we are required to pay taxes for this area and we think that not only the taxes paid on this, what had formerly been a street, but the, because of the tremendous cost of building the building, that the taxes will run somewhere possibly a hundred and fifty to a hundred and sixty thousand dollars a year, which will represent needed revenue to the city. Now, I'm very happy to answer any questions. I want to state...
Going price, we understand, on this land is somewhere around seven hundred dollars a front foot and you're paying a hundred and thirty-two. You talked about how this happened, you think this is fair?
Right, let me say this. I set forth the reasons in this paper, beginning on page two. I would say seven hundred dollars a front foot was very fair if we had a situ, first and foremost, where the city owned the fee, where the city owned full legal title to a piece of land. I would have no question with that price. And also, if there weren't these conditions attached to it. Number one, I am required to take and remove water pipes, sewer pipes, various utilities. That is at a cost to me, which adds to this price and which constitutes in a sense a blank check because I, as of this time, I have no idea what that cost is going to be.
Yes, but you'd have to move those utilities even if the land was owned by a private individual, wouldn't you?
No, if you presume that you have a situation of an ordinary building lot that you purchased, there are no utilities within the lot line that you have to move. I'm talking about removing the full line of water and sewer pipes coming down Well Street. And that's what we're concerned with. Let me say also, that is part of the consideration here. We are, the city will have access from our property to a vault. But also, I think count must be taken of the fact that we are not going to use the area above what must be referred to as a park or a grassy plot or anything you want to refer to. We're not going to use that area for any type of a building structure. I want to make perfectly clear that at no time have we said that we're not going to use the area above what was formerly the roadway because there were no trees in that roadway. That's a paved roadway. What we try, what in concept we were trying to do is to preserve for the neighborhood, and I as a fellow tree lover wanted to preserve the same identical, or almost identical, piece of open land with trees, with grass, plus these other embellishments by way of fountains, et cetera. And let me say also, that what again we commonly refer to as is a very irregular narrow piece of property. I think it's sixty-three feet on one side and it narrows down to six inches on the other side. Now, that I think is a factor in considering a proper price on this particular piece of land. But again, I say I had nothing to do with setting the price.
Kelleher, Alderman, McCutcheon, Holden, and Simon, of course, are calling for investigations on this. They want to reacquire the property by condemnation. They want to do a number of things. What will be your procedure, sir, if these measures are taken up in city council?
That is a matter entirely within the discretion of the city council. I did not initiate the vacation. I was, of course, pleased when it happened. My first reaction was, what does this mean? In terms of what our earlier building was because what had been the roadway there was actually going to be a drive-in for us. But whatever the city council decides is something, I have no control over in any way, shape, or form.
Well, would you fight them legally if they did attempt to reacquire the land or do something of this sort?
Let me say this, that this is something that did not develop recently. The city initiated these vacation proceedings. Approximately, I will, I think I've got the exact date of it here. This is not something new. And it, the law, as I understand it, requires that all proceedings of the city council be published in a journal. The first, as I understand, the order was issued to prepare an ordinance. That was published, an ordinance.
This isn't, wasn't, isn't this the controversial matter here?
I, oh, people can make controversy on anything they want and I presume that makes interesting reading.
Mr. Kelleher, the only thing then you're changing up there is the Well Street around that park, on one side of that park. That's the only thing you're going to change, is that correct?
Oh, no, I think...
As far as what people think the public property is up there?
Let me say this, that we are not going to leave this little area which is sixty-three feet, I think in the drawings on one side narrows down to six inches on the other and has these eleven trees. We're not going to leave that as is. We are going to take and spend thirty thousand dollars, and that's by estimate of our architect, on improving it.
Okay, but it's still, it will still be public property as far as you're concerned. People can go in there and walk around there, right?
Oh, yes, let me say it's not public property in this sense, that I have to pay the cost of maintaining it. Formerly, this was not vacated. The governmental authorities paid for the cost of... Uh, the governmental authorities, uh, paid for the cost of, uh...